In Osam City, you're watching One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with information, news, sports and public affairs. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. Serving you with love. Ang telebisyon pang masa. One TV News Channel. One TV News Channel. News. You with information, sports and public affairs. One. One TV Special. 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 Special Report. Special Report.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. We have no guests, officials, or any other items before. So we proceed by turn of five. I apologize to the deputy. There are sixteen, seventeen, four situations, Honorable Chair. For all the business. And we are in the middle of the conference room. The equation was the certificate of Ramon's snack line. But owned by Joanna Gita Mola. Honorable Chair. So, we cast to. Have, have been approved as a notice. A petition. We have a decision pending. Presenting this. Of me. June. June. Seventeen. Eight. Eight hundred and twenty-one. Many of us see at what event of the day. Because what event of our function. Did like this and other articles we see. So, we have to join hearing. The other issue is the articles on United States. Is it at what event of that of the function. So we then, in terms of issues, the benefit. For hearing the situation on today. You do not have a bad time. So I see to the second. Four situations, Honorable Chair. Number two, our resolution. I put it. Believe in for mission to start. And for this thing. It will be a town. Tapi, Labo Karangan Gangung Sangayjut. For a period, thirty June, twenty-third June. Three thirty-four, the day is in the mission of this. And I am to chairman, the meeting on the person. For the San Diego. To the first, the final action of this day, Honorable Chair. I'm sorry, Honorable Chair. I'm sorry, for the mission. There are six decisions. So. I'm sorry, it is the color. I'm not sure. Number two. Eight. The number three. Our session, I put it, believe in the aspect. And it's a present okay. In private video, I guess okay, and upon. Okay, yes. Sitting to the twenty-third. Believe in the four by the case of the notice. Number four. Our resolution, I put it, in the three, the cement. Is that this? Condition, that is, but the last time. Meaning program. Of the part of government, and the services. In two twenty-five. Barangai, Singapore, San Diego. Of the seven, twenty-third June, thirty-four. Number five. Possession is. Our resolution, authorizing. Local initiative, the government, general, and the inside. We have the positive, the number of events. With the part of the vision, the same supervision. And the general thing. And this close. For the twenty-four, Karangan, is civil. The application of ordinance, number. One, three, four, twenty-four. Authorizing a drug. Of the assistance. The principles of twenty-four, Karangan, is civil. Number six, Honorable Chair, is. Our resolution. I put it, the edition. On not additional. I had. And therefore. In a scale. And conditions against for trying to protect. By the Department of City Development. We love this. Then. On the six, twenty-four, the real targets, the test. Of Samis. The receiving. Is. Our resolution. I put it, in front of the destiny. The day of Samis, which is always the place to propose something. I am a person, sir. Where is also the visual position. For an object. And go to table. Go action. Samis City. And then. Is our resolution. Authorizing the loss of duty, in the contract. For government. Of the issues. In the. Assistents, intervention, and. The quality class. The emergency party, wanted. The instruction hour for the official. And waiting for the progress, which is the risk. This of. Of the present. You define twenty-four under section. Three, one. When the rule, official test, and the. Chairman, that's twenty-four, and brother from school. Of official. Under section three. Of official test, and the. Sheriff, who does twenty-four. Enacting the twenty-four, so that the budget, number one. Number nine, Honorable Chair, is. Our resolution. Approving the project, proposal. Who does in charge, Samis. Cast along the bayan. Savista. Twenty-three, twenty-four. Next, number ten. Is. Our resolution. Approving the. ICA. Run after provisions, either. Activity on twenty-June. Twenty-two, twenty-four, by the social security system. Of Samis. In Samis City. Number eleven, Honorable Chair, is our resolution. Approving the conduct. For the twenty-four changes of population. And community-based. Movement system. Back since seven days. When the evening. On us of mobile, prisoner. Data collection. By the previous statistics authority. On seventeen, twenty-two, June, June. Twenty-four, in Samis City. Number twelve. Right request. Is our resolution. Approving the purchase. Mobile precision. Person, where's, external, purchase, decision. Event, issuance. And authentication. By PSE, provincial office, in Samis City. Number thirteen. Our resolution, authorizing the local initiative, enter into contract. For the reaction. Improvement of the respect. At the bank, by the end of. Samis City, and the complex. For the implementation of project funded. By the construction, renovation, improvement, government, tax, taxes. Minimums, programs. Of the office, the mayor, under section three of. Official ordinance, number zero, two, twenty-four. Enacting. The twenty-four, so we the budget, number one. Number fourteen. Is. Our resolution. Authorizing the local initiative. Entertainer contract with the provision of. For the focus or. All. For the given. Of Samis City, and perform all acts. For the implementation of project. Funded. By the construction, repair, improvement. Of multiple purpose halls, buildings. Decades, centers. Structure, and different barangays. Account. Of the thirty percent, during the plan. Of twenty-three-four. Under section, three, point one, point. W. Of official ordinance, number zero-one, that's twenty-four, and construction. The program. Of poly purpose halls, buildings, decades, centers. Structure, and different barangays. Program, the office, the city mayor. Under section three of the official ordinance, number. Zero, two, twenty-four, enacting. The twenty-four, so we the budget, number one. Number fifteen, Honorable Chair, is. Our resolution. Authorizing the local initiative. Entertain the contract. For the provision of Kota Square. Development project. At barangai, the veteran for. Of Samis City, and perform all acts. For the implementation of the project. Funded. By the construction, and division, improvement of government, the tax, taxes. And minimums, program. Of the office, the city mayor. Under section three of. Official ordinance, number zero, two, twenty-four. Enacting. The twenty-three-four. So we the budget, number one. The last, but the least. Number sixteen. Right and possession is. Our resolution. Authorizing the local initiative. Entertain the contract with the completing of barangai road. At four, seven, barangai, barangai, Samis City. And perform all acts. For the implementation of the project funded from the construction. And or rehabilitation. And widening of local, barangai roads, the justice, police. System. Program. For thirty percent, during the plan. Of twenty-three-four, under section. Three, point one, point W. Of official ordinance, number zero-one, that's twenty-four. There are sixteen. Right and possession, Honorable Chair, and the move. And the motion. To approve. The agenda for today. With sixteen. Right and possession, Honorable Chair, on jet motion.
On jet motion. Move with the honorable Majority Leader. For the approval of our agenda for today. With. Sixteen process as being manifested. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Item number five. And number six. About the miss. The proposition. I guess everybody has forty minutes. Of a reservation on May seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-four. And everybody was able to. Prose. And examine the contest, Honorable Chair. Therefore. The motion, I move. To dispense. With the reading of the minutes. Of our previous reservation on May seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-four. And to approve. The content, seven minutes. In total, no chair.
Move with the honorable Majority Leader. For. Uh. To dispense the reading of the minutes previously, uh, session. And approve of the same in total. Any comment, remarks? During the motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number seven. President of the Business. Visit to letter B. After this, Honorable Masilian Stapayan. Our possession. Authorizing the charge amount of. Forty thousand five hundred fifty to the current. Abortion of the items, repair, and maintenance. Transportation, equipment, motor vehicle, under the office, the council. This, uh, repair. Spends. Is. On the repair of a motor vehicle issued. By way of. Memorial receipt. To, uh, sit on the boss, uh, Chair Romero, Honorable Chair. And this will be charged. In the current operation, Honorable Chair, so that. It can be paid to the shop. I promote. They promote on jet motion. To approve. Our resolution, authorizing the charge, the charge amount of. Forty thousand. Five hundred fifty to the current abortion. Of items, repairs, and maintenance. Transportation, equipment, motor vehicle, under the office, the council. For approval in the first reading. With reservations, Honorable Chair.
For approval of first reading, reservations. Move with the honorable Majority Leader. This resolution, authorizing. To charge the amount of forty-three. Thousand five hundred fifty, fifty pesos. To the current appropriation of item repair and maintenance. Transportation, equipment. Um. Motor. Vehicles under the office of the city council. Move for its approval of the first reading, the reservation.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, due to urgent demand, pardon interest. To spouse. Sound fiscal management. I move on jet motion to. Approve. Our resolution, authorizing the, to charge the amount of. Forty thousand five hundred fifty. To the current abortion of item, repairs, and maintenance. Transportation, equipment, motor vehicle. The office, the council. For approval on the Sikan. And the final reading. Weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Move for its approval on the Sikan and final reading. This proposed resolution. Any comment? Remarks? During the motion approved, the Sikan and final reading. Weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Petition or request for first reading. Number one. Twenty-two, twenty-four. So we the budget, number one, of barangai metering. In amount of. Forty thousand five hundred pesos. During endorse by the official for approval. I now yield to. Chairman of Committee on Barangai Affairs, Honorable. John Carlo Morales, to introduce. An agreement action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The honorable John Carlo Morales is now recognized with a chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Majority Leader, thank you, Madam Chair. Would like to pass the twenty-two, twenty-four supplemental budget, number one, of barangai metering. Amount of forty-three thousand five hundred. Uh, passing for first reading with reservation, Madam Chair.
For first reading reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Considering the urgency of the state supplemental budget of barangai metering. I would like to pass for Sikan and final reading.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Morales. Is passing this res. Proposed, uh. Resolution. For the approval on the Sikan and final reading, weaving the internal rule. This twenty-twenty-four supplemental budget, number zero-one, of barangai metering. In the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred. Any comment? Remarks? During the motion approved, on the Sikan and final reading. Weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number two. Date updated, June four. Twenty-two, twenty-four, from the OSE. City planning. And the event will return. Requesting for consideration. On the special use permit. Of bean stock coffee. A restaurant. That is failure to secure a private company. On affected. Institution. Of the Samis University. Honorable Chair, in order to. Recommend. A public action on this, uh, application for SCP. We need to conduct a. Joint committee hearing. On. June. Nineteen. At one thirty o'clock in the afternoon. Along with other SCP applicants, Honorable Chair. Uh, by joint committees. Committee on. Trade Commerce and Industry, Committee on. Loss. Process style. Committee on. Housing, planning. And storement. Honorable Chair. Joint committee hearing on, I repeat. On June nineteen. Wednesday. At one thirty o'clock in the afternoon. And may I present, Honorable Chair. The direction to the. Schedule date. On June nineteen. May I present to later day. My sister's communications.
This item, number two. There will be a joint committee hearing on. June nineteen, twenty-twenty-four. With the. Committee on Loss. And strike, housing, and.
Trade Commerce and Industry.
Trade Commerce and Industry. Noted.
Later day. Majorities and communications. During endorse by the city administration. City administration for the chairman. Resolutions for city disaster risk reduction. And management council. For our appropriate action. Number one. City. RRNC, resolution number seven. Series of twenty-two, twenty-four. Our resolution directing the city social welfare. And development office. To assess. Evolve. And profile the household families. Affected by the ongoing ill-nio phenomenon. As reported by the barangais. The office, the city mayor. For possible. Food. And non-food assistance. From the NGO. This, uh, resolution of the. DR, CDR, RMC, Honorable Chair. During this meeting. I, they promote. Move. Jet motion. To concord. Adapt. This, this is the number. Seven. Of CDR, RMC. Honorable Chair, for approval. The first reading with reservations, Honorable Chair.
For first reading reservations. Move with the honorable Majority Leader. To conquer and adapt this. CDR, RMC resolution, number zero-seven. Motion approved.
Due to urgent demand, pardon interest. I move on jet motion to. Adapt and conquer. CDR, RMC resolution, number seven. Series of twenty-two, twenty-four. For approval on Sikan and final reading. Weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the honorable Majority Leader. Is moving to conquer and adapt. This CDR, RMC resolution, number zero-seven. Series twenty-two, twenty-four. That is a resolution. Directing the so, city social welfare and development office. To assess. Evolve. And profile the household families affected. With the ongoing ill-nio phenomenon. As reported by the barangais. To the office of the city mayor. For possible food. And non-food assistance from the NGO. Move for its approval. On the Sikan and final reading to conquer and adapt. This CDR, RMC resolution, number zero-seven. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number two. CDR, RMC resolution, number eight. Series. Of twenty-two, twenty-four, our resolution. Directing the city planning. And development office. To consolidate. The ill-nio advisories. To be submitted by the city disaster risk reduction and management office. DOES. To city health office. City agricultural office. Solid waste. Environment management office. City veterinary office. And Bureau of Fire Protection. I therefore move, did motion. To conquer, adapt. This. CDR, RMC resolution, number eight. Series of twenty-two, twenty-four, for approval. On the Sikan and final reading. Weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Move with the honorable Majority Leader. To conquer and adapt this CDR, RMC resolution, number zero-eight, series of twenty-two, twenty-four. That is a resolution directing the city planning. And development office. To consolidate. The ill-nio advisories. To be submitted by the city disaster. Risk reduction and management office. Through the city health office, city agricultural office, solid waste and management. Solid waste and environment. Management office, city. Veterinary office, and the Bureau of Fire Protection. Move for to conquer and adapt this. CDR, RMC resolution.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Number three. CDR, RMC resolution, number ten. Series. Twenty-two, twenty-four, our resolution. Approving a recommendation. For the, the decision of the, in the RRMF. Unexpected balance, balances. For the years. Two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty. Two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three. For a procurement. Acquisition. Of disaster equipment. For disaster response. And rescue activities. I again move. The motion to conquer. With CDR, RMC resolution, number ten. Series twenty-two, twenty-four, during this. Meeting. Thus, evidence, twenty-two, twenty-four. For approval. For the first reading. With reservations, Honorable Chair.
Move for its approval. On first reading. With reservations to conquer and adapt. This CDR, RMC resolution, number twenty.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, due to urgent demand, pardon interest. I move on jet motion to conquer, adapt. CDR, RMC resolution, number ten. Series twenty-two, twenty-four. For approval. On the Sikan and the final reading. Weaving the internal rules, Honorable Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the honorable Majority Leader. Is passing this. To conquer and adapt this CDR, RMC resolution, number ten. Series of twenty-two, twenty-four. That is a resolution. Approving the recommendation. For the utilization. Of the LDR, RMF. And expanded balances. For the years. Two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-two. And two thousand twenty-three. For the procurement. Acquisition of disaster equipment. For disaster response. And rescue activities. Move. For its adoption. On the Sikan and final reading. Weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks? During the motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Items. Four. Five. Six. Seven, and eight. Are, uh. Resolutions of San Pablo Legal, of Samis Occidental. Approving. Our vice resolutions. Of the city of Samis. Honorable Chair. I, I, I guess everybody is able to cross. This resolution of the. Uh, city council of Samis, approved by the San Pablo Legal of Samis Occidental. I therefore move. On only one motion. To. To recommend. That all these resolutions. Of the San Pablo Legal of San Pablo Occidental. Be in the meantime. Be duly recorded. Be duly, uh. Noted. In the record, city council, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Leader. Move. And manifested by the honorable Majority Leader. That this resolution. From the Sangguneang, Panalawigan, of Samis Occidental. For item. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Be just. Duly noted. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are no committee reports submitted. On the item number eight. Item number nine. Please proceed. To let us see. On the sign business whereby. We have approved. Sixteen. Focus, right instructions, Honorable Chair. And may I start with the first. Right instruction. Uh, the application of. Ramon's. Snack and dine. Owned by. Joanna Gita Mola, Honorable Chair. I. Recommend again that this will be. Jointly scheduled. For a, a joint hearing. Of the committee on. Loss, 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 style. Committee on Trade Commerce and Industry. Committee on. Housing. Sonning, and storement. On. June nineteen. Wednesday. Next week. Twenty-two, twenty-four. At one thirty o'clock. In the afternoon. Uh, jointly with the. SCP application. Of. Beanstalk. Which, uh, already is supporting. A while ago. Beanstalk, coffee, and restaurant, Honorable Chair.
Manifested by the honorable Majority Leader. That this. Ramon's snack and dines application for a special use permit. This will be referred to. The joint meeting. On June nineteen, twenty-eight, twenty-four. Noted for the chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. About session number two. Our resolution. Approving the. Twenty-two, twenty-four commercial livestock. And poultry survey. In barangai, barangais, pantauon. Pulot. Tabit. Labo, karangan, gangung. Hang Sangayjut. For the period. Fifteen-June. To thirty-June. Twenty-two, twenty-four, by the PSE provincial office. I now. Yield to, to wisdom of the chairman of the committee on. Adicosa, Honorable. Sania Minal Junior, to introduce. An agreement on this item, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Minal, you honor repubished with a chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, this sample presentation would like to move. Resolution approving the twenty-two, twenty-four commercial livestock. And poultry survey, CLP's, in barangai pantauon. Pulot. Tabit. Labo. Karangan. Gangung, and sangayjut. For the period. Excuse me. Fifteen-June to. Thirty-June, twenty-two, twenty-four, by the PSE provincial office. Be approved on first reading, Madam Chair, with reservation, on joint motion.
Move for first reading, reservations. Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, considering the urgency. Madam Chair, and in the spirit of public service, may I dear forebook. That this be approved or Sikan and final reading. Weaving. The internal rules of this Sangguneang. Thank you.
Move with the honorable Minal. Pass this resolution. On the Sikan and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This resolution approving. The twenty-two, twenty-four commercial livestock. And poultry survey. In barangai pantauon. Pulot. Tabit. Labo. Barangai Gangung, and Sangayjut. poultry survey in barangay Pantauon, Pulot, Tabid, Labo, barangay Ganggo, and Sangayjut for the period of June 15 to 30, 2024 by the PSC provincial office. Any comments, remarks, during the motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval session number 3, a resolution approving the 2023 household energy consumption survey in barangays Banjero, by San Roque, and Malau Bang for a period 17 June to 19 July, 2024 by the PSC, which the office, and I yield to chairman of committee on public utilities, honorable Chair Romero, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The honorable Romero is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Hello, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Major Teflo leader. Madam Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving the 2023 household energy consumption survey, 2023 HECs in barangay Banjero, by San Roque, and Malau Bang for the period of 17 June to July 19, 2024 by the PSC provincial office, Madam Chair, passing this for first reading with reservation.
Move for first reading reservations, motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, due to its urgency, Madam Chair, and public interest, Madam Chair, I move to pass this for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the honorable Romero is passing this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules, a resolution approving the 2023 household energy conservation survey, 2023 in barangay Banjero, by San Roque, and Malau Bang for the period of June 17 to 19, June 17 to July 19, 2024 by the PSC provincial office. Move for its approval, this request resolution on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Approval session number 4, a resolution approving the inventory and assessment of the established plantation projects under the National Learning Program of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Institute Pan, barangay Simpson, Abordo, Osami City on 27 to 28 June 2024, and I yield to the chairman of the committee on environment and natural resources, honorable John Saken, to introduce an action on this item, Honorable Chair.
The honorable Saken is now recognized by the chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution approving the inventory and assessment of the established plantation projects under the National Learning Program of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources in city of Tipan, barangay Simpson, Abordo, Ozam City on 27 to 28 June 2024, first reading, Honorable Chair, with reservation.
For first reading with reservations, motion approved.
Honorable Chair, for the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Approving this on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules, this resolution approving the inventory and assessment of the established plantation projects under the National Learning Program of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources at city of Tipan, barangay Simpson, Abordo, Osami City on June 27 to 28, 2024. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.